Thank you for coming to the 375th Anniversary Lecture Series. We have Sid Williams this evening talking about the central schools in Newport. A couple of things that I want to mention is, first of all, I'm Lynn Segley. I'm on the 375th Anniversary Committee. And on Saturday, I just want to mention a couple of things. On Saturday, at 2 o'clock, we will have Jim Garman speaking about the British occupation in Newport, and that will be at the Newport Public Library. And then on the 27th, at the Colony House, we'll have Victoria Johnson speaking about African-American firsts, right? So we're hoping that you can all come out for that. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Sid Williams. He's an educator, and he was Assistant Superintendent in Newport, and he is the historian for the Newport Public Schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is the second in a series of lectures about the schools and how they got their names. Because some of you may not know me. It's a little bit about me, and I have put it on here so that those of you who don't know me know a little bit about my background in terms of not being a native Newporter. That's correct. But I have been blessed to spend almost my entire career in the Newport Public Schools. The past, well, the last time we had this, we looked at Newport in terms of what happened to the people who started here in the center of town in the 1600s and moved their way up into the Point area and built schools. Tonight, we're looking at the group of schools that were built and used right around the center of the city. Next month, we're going to take a look at the schools that started close to the center of the city and then moved on to the southern end. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next. This is what Newport looked like when Roger Williams and the colonists that came with him came down the river. This would be the Washington Street area with marshes. This would be Long Wharf. Up into this area would be what we know as Washington Square. Notice the plateaus and the hills. We are a hilly community that a lot of people don't realize, even though they go up and down the streets. It also means that water will come from these particular outcroppings, go down the hill, and go into the bay. Those of you who may live in houses that are situated near what these plateaus used to be, like this would have been Bellevue Avenue, this would be Broadway going out, will know that sometimes water is beneath your house because there are springs. And they were of fresh water. Next, please. This is a map that was done by Lloyd Robson, who was the historian of Newport schools before I took over the job. Note, please, this is probably the area around Long Wharf, Gravelly Point. They built a berm in through here, later years, and then through here, and marked off what we call the Cove. This is now the site of the Newport Visitor Center, Information Center. Also note that there's a river coming down from a pond which would be somewhere near Middletown. There's also swampy areas through here, and swamps all through this area of the Point down along what is now Washington Street. Next, please. By 1712, we have farmlands. As you can see, just a few main streets. This was Thane Street. This would have been the Washington Square area. Instead of the population moving to the north and west, the part, yeah, the north and west, this was a movement more to the west than to the north. You also find wharves appearing, and we'll see a little bit more about the wharves in just a few moments. Next, please. And you'll see in a few moments how this relates to schools. The items in blue are the ones that we talked about in the first lecture. Tonight, we're going to be looking at the ones in red, the Broadway, the hill, Freebody Park, West Broadway, which we now know as Marcus Wheaton Boulevard. Next, please. This is what Newport looked like in the early 1900s. Notice the sailing boat over here. This would be where the Newport Yacht Club is at the moment. There's also a story going back to Gravelly Point where, I believe, it was 19 pirates when we were under British rule, were brought to trial here in Newport, were hung in this area of Long Wharf. Their bodies cut down and thrown on the rocks on God Island. They were not buried, they were left to rot. But you can see some of the things that were going on. We had breweries for rum, a lot of them, shipyards to construct and repair boats all along here, and also rope works for the reading of the sailing ships. Next, please. This is looking at it from the west side again, but a longer shot. It didn't change much in the early 1900s from the 18 to the 1900s. Next, please. This is what we call the Cove or the Basin. Those of you who grew up in Newport used to refer to going to the ballpark at the basin, which we know as Cottrell Field. It was once water. You can see the railroad tracks that went all the way down and curved to the north. Over here would be the railroad station, and this was Long Wharf. Quite a change. Now, looking south, being right about here, yeah, right about here, this is what the Cove looked like if you unlanded, because there's the railroad tracks, there's the Cove with the boats in it, and the houses along Long Wharf. Next, please. Shipyards, seawater in the basin. Notice water on both sides of the track, and it is currently the Visitor's Center. Next, please. These are some of the activities that were going on at the waterfront in Newport, which was really the center of your retail, your manufacturing. Notice the number of vessels cleared for goods from foreign countries, 184 of them. That's pretty good for this little town. Whaling vessels, unloading whale products, very similar to the sperm whale factories that we had down on Thane Street. Cargos of molasses coming in. Notice 22 distilleries on Thane Street. Add 11 more from the Cove, and Newport was putting out a lot of alcohol. Sugar refineries, furniture factories. It was a bustling town. And I'm going to suggest to you, there's a meeting, another lecture coming up two nights from now, where they're going to talk about the Revolution and how Newport was affected by it. I urge you to see it, because you're going to see how desolate this community was and how devastated it was when the British decided to leave, put into one of their ships almost the entire batch of city wreckage. And then, as they went out the bay, bombarded Newport. They didn't touch one building in particular, Trinity Church, because it had a cross, I'm sorry, a crown at the top of the wind vane. Next, please. These are some of the things that we sometimes don't like to think about. For example, there was little or no education except for those who could pay. So if you didn't have a job making five cents an hour, you used whatever money you got to take care of the family expenses. Those who had money would send their children to private schools. Now, a school at that time was considered a room. So if you had a place up on, let's say, Bull Street, and you had four empty rooms on the first floor, and you wanted to run a school, you didn't have to have a college education. All you had to do was know how to read and write, and pass some tests that I'll show you in just a few moments. But that would be considered a school. Each one of those rooms would be considered a school. So using that criteria, Newport had, at one time, almost 200 schools. And these were populated by children of parents who could pay for the education. These are the children who didn't have an education, that worked in the factories, shipyards, and refineries from at least age five. Now, that's pretty young. But times were tough. Now, we have also prided ourselves in Newport that we've always, always been positive on education. That was not always the case. Sometimes it was a matter of economics. Again, if you had the money, your child or children could get an education. If you didn't have the money, they went to work. Most of the schools were built in the northwest, or headed towards the northwest, starting down at Washington Square, heading out through the Point into the swamp. For those of you in Newport who know where the swamp is, that would be around Van Zandt Avenue, and then further out into the north end, which would have been like Park Home Town. The last item there is an interesting one, because one of the first school committee minutes, which are now on loan from the School Department and the Newport Historical Society, indicate that vandalism was one of their biggest problems. Children who were being forced to go to school by their parents decided they would take out their vengeance by throwing rocks at the schools. Next, please. This is not a picture of any Newport children. This is a picture of children in Pennsylvania around the turn of the century into the 1900s who were having their picture taken at their breakfast break before they went into the mines. They were small enough, so those people who owned the mines would take these little children, put them down a hole. Next, please. That's a long gap between 1776 and 1825, but I think you'll hear more about that in that next lecture in a few days, because Newport had a terrible time coming out of the Revolution. The other thing that the British did was they burned as much as they could. Long Wharf was left just to the pilots. And the only public school that we had at the time was the free school named for a benevolent pilot, Simeon Potter. The building still stands on the corner of Marsh Street and Washington Street. I forgot to put in the number of years that it lasted, but you can subtract 1776 from 1825, it's about thirty-some odd years. And that school had been given to the city and said, "This will be a school forever." 1825, closed. That was forever at that time. I mentioned the Long Wharf trustees. I mentioned them at the past lecture, because this is a group of merchants, lawyers, doctors, who used gambling money, which was allowed by the state of Rhode Island. Many of the streets in Newport were paved as a result of lotteries. Marlborough Street was one. Thane Street was another. What they did is they took monies from the lotteries that they couldn't use, because one of the things they wanted to do was to redo Long Wharf. And they did that. But they also wanted to put a hotel on there, no backing of the hotel. So they took whatever lottery monies were over and built the Willow Street School, which we call Calendar, and the Elm Street School, which was renamed Potter. Both of them are gone. Now, the interests of the Long Wharf trustees accumulated over the years, because they're still in action today in Newport. Every year, for at least the past seven or eight years, they have given $30,000 a year in scholarships to Rogers High School. And these scholarship recipients do not have to pay back one single cent. Since they started doing this wonderful thing for the children in Newport, Rogers High School has received over $900,000 in scholarships, which have been given out and no return is asked. And the group is still active today. Next year, they will give another $30,000 if their investments prove to be sufficient. It took us until around 1830 for the General Assembly to finally put the squeeze onto a lot of communities. You've got to do something in the realm of public education. Next, please. This, of course, is another shot of young girls at play. They are working in a mill. You can see the age, maybe preteens, with their mothers on the other side. Education was not that important, bringing in enough money to pay the bills worst. Next, please. This is the basic area that we're going to take a look at, as far as the schools. You can see they're pretty well clustered. They stayed around the area of Toro Street, Mary Street, School Street. Next, please. And these are when they opened. You can see that most of them go way back and are standing today. Useful in schools, not in today's world, because there are too many things that need to be corrected. So the school committees were in a bind. Do you try and repair the school, or do you try and get something better for the children? And they took the option of looking for something better. Did they get a lot of flack? Sure they did. And they continue to go, because those of us who have been around a long time look at these buildings, and they're like fortresses. You mean we can't do anything with them? Not in today's world, not where it's going to be given some kind of value for the dollars that you invest. Next, please. I put this one in this particular place because I want you to notice this building right here. That is the original Newport High School, 1842. This building right here is the Artillery Company Museum. This building right here, this is taken around 1916, that's John Clark School. You can just see it's being framed now. This building had both high school and elementary school. You had two rooms of high school and two rooms for the elementary school. Next, please. This is the grade structure that was prominent in Newport schools until the early 1920s. I'm not going to give you specific dates tonight, I want you to get a feel for around when it happened. Kindergarten, third primary, second primary, first primary, they sound far into us right now, but this is the way it came from England or from Europe. Notice there were grade 13. You had 10, 11, 12, 15 in the high school. And they finally eliminated it in 1927. Next, please. Connington School, I was talking about it earlier. Twelve rooms, it was big, it was an ark. We finally, it was declared unfit right at the end of World War II. The school committee finally decided to abandon it and sold it to Trinity Church. Now, if you look closely, there's Trinity Church. This now sits on the site of, I think it's the Trinity Church Community Building, a beautiful white structure. That was where Connington School was. There's Trinity, and this would be Mill Street. Next, please. I haven't found a picture of a portrait yet, and can't spell available either. But this is basically, some of these editing things are right by me. This is basically who William Connington was, a judge, a governor, not only of Aquinagana, when Aquinagana was, had the equivalency of a state, but also the state of Rhode Island. Next, please. Another William Cranston, Cranston Street, former editor of the Daily, who was mayor of the city, and also helped to bring the railroad to Newport. And notice the age at which he died. That was pretty average for those times. Next, please. At least we had someone here who died at a later age. But here again, sometimes schools are named for people in political life, sometimes they're named for people who contributed something to the city. So there has not appeared to be too much of a rhyme or reason. Committees have made their own decisions based upon the conditions that they found at the time. Next, please. Cranston Calvin. 1935 is when they joined the two together, right at the time that we had the Great Depression. Did anyone here attend Cranston Calvin at all? I taught there for a while. It was a magnificent school. And one of the programs that it had was the Gifted and Talented Program for sixth-grade students. This was a wonderful program for children who had the ability to read, to write, to compute. But there were some people who said, "These children are being treated as elitists." And so the program gradually died away. It had originally been started at John Clark School under a gentleman by the name of, oh, God, slipped that one, John Hogan. Next, please. I think all of us have had quite an education about Dr. John Clark, who was buried over here off Marcus Wheaton Boulevard. There's been quite a bit, both on television and in the paper media, so we won't spend too much time on him. Next, please. This is the John Clark School, opened in 1916. You saw a little bit of the construction. Notice it had capacity of 333 and nine rooms. Now, this was like the utility outfield of schools, because look at all the things that they did with it. Elementary school, they moved the gifted program over there, had a sixth-grade center, became the School Department's administrative center, and then a temporary courthouse. And now it's being used for apartments.
You notice the number of pupils and the number of rooms. You do a little division.
Uh, yes. It might not go over too well today. Next, please. Again, we take a look at the Newport High School on Clark Street, even though we know that the one that sits there now is on Mary Street. Notice that, oh, a capacity of 52. We're going to see some figures in a few moments that'll give you an idea of some of the graduates and the number of graduates that we've had. Next, please. Woody Metz Rogers, you too is buried in the cemetery just off Farewell Street. Note, he left $100,000, because the Reverend Thatcher Thayer convinced him that that would be a good use of money. He agreed. Next, please. And we wind up with this building. This is Rogers High School Number One on Church Street. Started with 66, closed, was renamed in 1906 for the Reverend Thayer, because everyone was so happy that he had convinced William Rogers to give some money. because everyone was so happy that he had convinced William Rogers to give some money. Next time you're out, if you haven't or don't know where this is, come down Church Street from Bellevue. Get about halfway down and look to your left. There's a brick building there called the Newport County Boys and Girls. That was the original Rogers High School. Up, what they did was chop it off, right about there. Up in here was an observatory with a telescope. Next place. This man is a legend. It's the man who spent so many years, not only a submaster at the old school on Church Street, but came here when Rogers opened in 1905. Notice a little bit about him. They didn't call people assistant principals or principals. They called them submaster and master. That journey was carried on right up until the early 1950s. Also notice when he retired and when he died. One month after retirement. He was a legend. He still is a legend. It would take a couple of hours just to go over the things that he was responsible for putting into Rogers. Next place. Excuse me. This was after the fire in 1920. We'll see a bit about the fire in just a moment. Let me put our losses in, please, so I don't get too hoarse. There's a difference between a classical high school and a comprehensive high school. Rogers was a classical high school. That meant, in order to go into Rogers as a freshman, you had to take an exam. If you did not pass the exam, you did not go to Rogers High School. As I say here, the classical evolved into a comprehensive. Comprehensive is basically, we try to meet all the needs of all the children, which is almost impossible. But we try in a comprehensive high school. And we have, as we have tried in the junior high school as well. Excuse me, middle school. Next place. These were the offerings at Rogers. Nothing too comprehensive there. Next place. Now this is what you had to do as a student in the classical mode that the school was in. Thirteen grades. You had to pass English. It was required for each of 10, 11, 12, and 13. And that was with a mark of 70% or better. You had to take a foreign language for a minimum of two years. And you had to pass the foreign language for two years. And you can see which ones were available. The other courses, physics, chemistry, history, civics, geometry, biology, stenography, all had the same basic requirement. You had to pass an examination each year to go from freshman to sophomore. If you didn't pass, you were kept back. No question. If you didn't make it the second time, you were in very bad shape. They might let you come in for the third time, and they might not. You had to pass a written and/or exam in every subject in every year. That was the classical curriculum. Do we have it today? I would say in private schools, yes. But not in public schools. Next place. Rogers had a fire. It took the top two floors in 1920. You can see how it's been gutted. As a result, the children who were going to Rogers got split up to John Clark and Mumford. So that created a burden on the children who were already at those schools. And this went on for almost two years. Next place. Those of you who went to this building when it was Rogers may remember that you came in, this was the Thompson Industrial School. I'm sorry, right over there. The Thompson Industrial School. You went in, you went through a series of small classrooms. You had to go upstairs and then downstairs and you were weaving all over the place. This was the Coles Laboratory, given specifically for scientific purposes. Next place. This is the house of Mrs. Thompson. And you can see the new vocational building being constructed in the back. And it was for promising boys. Remember, girls in those days were supposed to only be homemakers, seamstresses, waitresses, cleaners. They were not supposed to have any kind of a profession. And notice, they were admitted later on for domestic kinds of occupations. Next place. Some of the courses that were given in the Townsend Industrial School, including blacksmithing, that tells you what time of age it was. And the difference between what the girls could take and what the boys could take. That has changed in a comprehensive high school. People are allowed to take things that they would like to take. Next place. In the machine shop, it used to be down in that building, down on the ground floor. This is what it looked like in the 1940s. We were in the middle of World War II. We were building torpedoes over on Goat Island at the old torpedo station. When the children were not in school, after, let's say, four o'clock in the afternoon, adults were brought in to learn some of the machine trades. So they could be hired over the torpedo station to help make torpedoes for the war. Next place. This was carpentry. I want you to take a good look at this headboard. These pieces of furniture were everyday occurrences from young men working in the shops. They could leave Thompson or Rogers and get a job with any carpenter, with any woodworker, because they had the skills. Skills, I'm sorry to say, that a lot of parents don't think their children should have. And a lot of children think, "I don't want to do that for a lifetime." These students were good, and the teachers were damn good. Next place. These are some of the graduation figures, just to give you an idea of what we had for student bodies. Look at 1905. Twenty-nine graduates. That was big. Got up to the 30s, 180. In 1955, 267. And the present year is there at 102. That's how the population of Newport schools has dropped. Next place. This will give you another indication of the same thing. It's the total of students we had in the school system. Look at 1960. Over 6,000 students. Look at 2014. We've lost around 4,000 students. Why? Because the parents have moved. There are now other high schools on the island. We were once, at Rogers High School, we were a magnet school, if you will, in a loose kind of term. We were a regional school, is what I'm saying. We had children from Middletown, Portsmouth, Tiverton, Little Conton, Jamestown, all coming here. When the Navy was told to leave, you can see how it affected us in a short period of time. By 1990, down to 3,500. And right now, I believe this is the final figure, as the June reports. So we didn't, don't have a need for a lot of schools. So they have been sitting there, empty. And school committees have been going out of their gourd, trying to figure out how to use them as efficiently as you possibly can. And not have a big piece of the budget going just for maintaining buildings. Next place. And part of it has been this decline in the neighborhoods. Because Newport was primarily, in these first days, a neighborhood community with neighborhood schools. And so you can see the population moving out of the area. And with them go the children. The constant changes in the district lines. We used to go out of our tree in the summertime, trying to figure out how we can move some children around within the districts and not have the parents crawling all over us. Sometimes the parents were fine with it, even though their children may be in one school this year, that school the next year, and this school a third year from there. They were being placed where we could put them into the buildings and in the rooms. The Civil Rights Act in the 60s also brought about some changes. The federal government said schools, school districts are to be as balanced as they possibly can be. There was a lot of hard feeling in those years as Newport tried to do the best that it could. And one of the big impetus, besides Gene realizing that it was the right thing to do, the federal government said, "If you don't follow these guidelines, you will not be getting your federal funds in support of schools." And we used to get between $4 and $5 million every year. So if we had not done what the federal government wanted to, the taxpayers would have been on the hook for over $4 or $5 million every single year. We also lost the Navy ships, as many of us can remember. And we thought that Newport would never survive, but it did. We've seen the population's movements to Middletown and Portsmouth, where they have been starting to bulge at the same people. People don't want to live in a city all their lives. They want a piece of land of their own. They want a yard, they want to have some space. And of course, the city has shifted to the tourist industry. So we really have wound up with a lack of need for buildings that are going to take a lot of money to fix. Hence, we were able to consolidate. Next place. These are the schools, so far in this lecture series, that have been closed or abandoned. And it has taken a lot of effort on the part of school people, administrators, and superintendents.
With the Farewell and Edward Street, the one that we came up with?
Yeah, those two, I mentioned the last, are still standing on Warner Street. The Edward Street School came from Calibrell Street in the 1860s. The Farewell Street School was on site. A fellow by the name of Mumford petitions people to put a new building over there on Farewell Street. And they finally did. And those two buildings are still standing, 32 and 34 Farewell Street. Not bad for buildings built in the 1800s. Next place. These are the schools we're going to take a look at next month. I have placed parochial schools in there because they have, throughout our lives, those of us who have lived in Newport, there was some great rivalry, some great friendships. There were times, those of you who have lived around Newport a while, will remember the Eskits, the Eastern States Catholic Invitational when all the young men lost their girlfriends to the Eskits. There was also the rivalry between Rogers and Dalisell. So that's basically it, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you've gotten a bit of flavor for what we have had in the center section. I apologize for my mumbling-bumbling with the machinery. But I do appreciate the fact that you've come out tonight, and I appreciate it. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll try and give some answers. Yes, ma'am?
Was the Townsend, the relatives of the Townsend Furniture Makers?
Yes, they were related.
The lovely house that you...
Yes.
Was the Townsend School part of Rogers High School, or were they separate?
Well, when they first built this complex, they built, first of all, the Rogers Building, which was this one. Then the Townsend Building. Then the Coles Building. All three separate buildings. When the fire occurred in 1920, they said, "Let's combine them all together," rather than having the kids go out through the storm, the rain, the sleet. So they built this long piece on Central Street. They joined Townsend with Coles. And they also, for a short period of time, built a wooden walkway on the second floor that went between Townsend and this building. They finally got rid of it because it became unsafe.
But were they, the kids who went to Townsend, they were known as the Townsend Kids? And the kids who went to Rogers were Rogers Kids? They didn't...
Townsend and Rogers.
Not Thompson, I meant Townsend.
Townsend? No, they were part of Rogers.
They were all part of Rogers.
Yeah.
The affiliation was very similar to what's out at Rogers and Newport County Tech Center. Basically the same.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When you have your sound about the decline in the population of students, I think that there's one more very significant factor, and that probably would be economics. Because I know so many kids that would love to be on this island and just can't afford it. So I think economics is a huge part of the reason why it was so...
First of all, what kind of skills do you prepare children for that they're going to need five or 10 years from now? Good example. I was in a gas station a couple of years ago. And I, it was a self-serve. I put the gas in, took out a $20 bill from my wallet. I knew it was going to be $18 and change. Went into the clerk. He punched his computer thing, recognized it was $18 and change. I gave him a $20 bill. Turned his back on me, put it into the computer, then hit the enter button. The drawer came out and the screen went blank. He spat this back and forth, looking around. He finally reached over for a hand calculator in order to make the change. Children and some adults don't know how to make change anymore. Noted some of the things that they had to do for written examinations? Now we're not supposed to teach cursive writing anymore. I have been on several scholarship boards, and we have required... And we have required that the students for some particular scholarship awards are to write an essay on whatever. The penmanship is atrocious. The spelling is horrible. And there are too many that come in that are perfectly typed that you know in your heart were not written by the students. How do you begin to factor that in? I don't know.
I am on the board for the Long War Scholarship Committee for scholarships.
Speak up just a little louder.
I am on the board for the Long War that gives the money to the children for scholarships every year. And we ask that they handwrite their essay.
Yes.
If it's not handwritten, then we don't look at it.
Go back yourselves, some years, or maybe your parents will confirm this. When you went to a neighborhood school, it was great. You walked out of the house, you went to school, let's say to Calendar School over on the point. About eleven, eleven fifteen, you went home and had a nice meal. About twelve-thirty, you're back in school. You're out at around three-thirty, four o'clock. And you're taking home homework, which was required of you and was to be ready for the next day. You didn't have a calculator. Some of you didn't have electricity in the house, some didn't have a refrigerator. They had an icebox. There was no TV. You had nothing better to do but to listen to your parents, who said, sit down and do the homework. And too many times, to these parents, so what? It's a shame. I'm firmly convinced that there are a lot more parents out there that are doing the right thing by the children. But it's these others that don't get that kind of a support search that bothers me. Another question?
At that particular time, we're talking about Mumford and John Clark. Remember the time with the double sessions? And that was horrific, because you had the six-day schedule. I went to the Mumford part of Mumford School, and then those, the downtown people came up to the John Clark section of Mumford School. And I gather the teachers must have put all this stuff away when the afternoon people came, and then vice versa.
That's correct.
And still you had, you had your phys ed, and you had the cooking and the sewing and all of that. And then, for a couple of weeks, the seventh and eighth grade, for a couple of weeks, the girls went into the shop classes, which I liked much better than that junk that we had.
But at the same time, Rogers High School had double sessions.
That's correct.
And then the boys went into the cooking and sewing, and I thought that was something.
I started at Cranston Coward, fifth grade, nineteen fifty-three, double sessions. And I had forty-five in the classroom for that period of time with no assistance. You made do. And I had run across several of my former students from Cranston Coward, who are now in their sixties, who have said, thank you. Because they were required to meet a standard. And if they needed the help, they got the help. But was it chaotic? Absolutely. You had Rogers, as we'll talk next time, on double sessions for a while as well.
I think that's when they opened this place.
Yeah, it was around the same time. Oh, we were jammed with-
It was basically just Portsmouth, Middletown at first said Portsmouth. Middletown was built in sixty-two, and then Portsmouth in sixty-sixty-seven.
Those buses would be jammed in the afternoon coming in and out of that.
And there were, that school was the Gills.
But up until the mid to late sixties, when I started, like I say, back in the Jurassic, when I started teaching, double grade, two grades in one room, my first assignment. First and second, two complete classes. I had trained in third and fifth, and I thought, oh my goodness. And you had kids who had never been to kindergarten, because it wasn't mandatory they had it, number one. And then they had, they didn't have to go. So I mean, you had some kids who didn't know red from green from the ground. Then you had others who were really creative shop, you know.
And you know-
But you did it, and there was no help, you just did it, yeah.
You had kids back then who could not reach their maximum potential. We have kids today who may never reach their maximum potential either. But if we can give them a foundation that will help them to become good people, good citizens, and feel comfortable with themselves, I think we've given them a whilla of a life. I talk with my hands. One more.
I have to give credit to a teacher, and you all may remember her, her name was Mrs. Shannon.
Oh, Elsie.
She taught opportunity classes.
Yes, Elsie Shannon.
Kids were fantastic. She taught them things that I don't think they could learn in the regular grade.
And they loved her.
They were just fantastic, they were wonderful in her classroom. They would stand on two hands and walk across the floor if she asked them.
Yes.
She was excellent, excellent.
Yes.
And they called it the opportunity class.
Thank you again.